I'm riding because I probably. It hasn't yet.
You'll see much more.
I know, I got it.
The license is.
They almost. But they would come back. Screwing this up. We're doing this. So he had to go home and rule his cake. And still, still do all this. So he, he goes, I've never heard of it. So King would do it.
If you would like a 30 second warning before your time is up, just as a heads up, we are happy to do that. Just tell me up top that you'd like that. Otherwise, I'll yield the full three minutes to you. At the end of the three minutes, I'll thank you for your comments. We're going to get started in just a minute.
Okay, I'm going to call the meeting to order. If I could please have a roll call?
Commissioner Brewer.
Here.
Commissioner McDaniel.
Here.
Commissioner McCowen.
Here.
Commissioner Jablonski. Commissioner Byrd.
Here.
Commissioner McLaur.
Here.
Commissioner Griffith.
Here.
Commissioner Kendall.
Here.
And Commissioner Parker. All right, we have a quorum.
We have a few items that we have one of our commissioners that will be recusing from. These are going to be items from the consent docket number three, items six, seven, eight, nine, 10, and 11. So those items, we do have a request for a recusal for. Based on that, I am going to pull item number three from the consent docket. Unless there's any other comment from commissioners, the intent isn't for a public hearing on that item by pulling it, but just to allow for the recusal. So we will just proceed as though it's a consent item unless there's any other attention that you want to call to that item. So, starting with that, should we start with the consent docket or read the letter recuse? Could I get a motion for a recusal for Commissioner McCowen for items three, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, and 11?
I'll make a motion.
And a vote.
Commissioner McLaur. After what?
Are you going in a random order?
I couldn't hear.
Yes.
Commissioner Byrd.
Yes.
Commissioner Griffith.
Yes.
Commissioner Kendall.
Yes.
Commissioner Brewer.
Yes.
And Commissioner McDaniel.
Yes.
Okay, going to our consent items. Item number one, consideration of approval, acceptance, rejection amendment and/or postponement of the minutes as follows. Planning Commission's special meeting minutes of February 3, 2025, Planning Commission meeting minutes of February 13, 2025, and item number two, consideration of approval, acceptance, rejection amendment and/or postponement of PP-2425-10, consideration of a preliminary plat submitted by WPM Properties LLC, Bobby Skaggs Land Surveying LLC, for Charleston Ridge addition for .47 acres of property generally located at the southeast corner of the intersection of Tecumseh Road and Charleston Road. Does any member of the commission wish to remove any item from the consent docket? Does any member of the audience wish to move any item from the consent docket? Seeing none, I would take a motion.
I move to approve the minutes from the February 3 and February 13 meeting and the preliminary plat, item two.
A second add.
And a vote.
Commissioner Brewer.
Yes.
Commissioner McDaniel.
Yes.
Commissioner McCowen.
Yes.
Commissioner Byrd.
Yes.
Commissioner McLaur.
Yes.
Commissioner Griffith.
Yes.
And Commissioner Kendall.
Yes.
Carries seven to zero.
Okay, moving to item number three, which, as a reminder, we have one of our commissioners recusing from. Consideration of approval, acceptance, rejection amendment and/or postponement of COS-2425-9, consideration of Norman rules, certificate of survey submitted by the Ranch of Robinson LLC, Durham Surveying, Inc., for Ranch on Robinson for 54.067 acres of property generally located at the southeast corner of the intersection of East Robinson Street and 60th Avenue Northeast. Is there any other comment requested for this item? Seeing none, I would take a motion.
Motion to approve.
And a vote.
Commissioner McDaniel.
Yes.
Commissioner Brewer.
Yes.
Commissioner Kendall.
Yes.
Commissioner Griffith.
Yes.
Commissioner McLaur.
Yes.
And Commissioner Byrd.
Yes.
Carries seven, six to zero.
Moving to our non-consent items, number four and five to be read together. Item number four, consideration of approval, acceptance, rejection amendment and/or postponement of Resolution R-2425-81, a resolution of the Council of the City of Norman, Oklahoma, mending the Norman 2025 Land Use and Transportation Plan so as to remove part of the north half of the southeast quarter of Section 15 Township 9 North, Range 3 West of the Indian Meridian, Cleveland County, Oklahoma, from low-density residential designation and place the same in the office designation 271036 Avenue Northwest. An item number five, consideration of approval, acceptance, rejection amendment and/or postponement of ordinance O-2425-24, an ordinance of the Council of the City of Norman, Oklahoma, mending Section 36-201 of the Code of the City of Norman so as to remove part of the north half of the southeast quarter of Section 15 Township 9 North, Range 3 West to Norman, Cleveland County, Oklahoma, from the A2 Rural Agricultural District and place the same in the O1 Office Institutional District and providing for the severability thereof, 271036 Avenue Northwest. And I would take the staff presentation.
Good evening, commissioners. So, as you have before you tonight, we do have a project at 271036 Avenue Northwest, and the first thing that I'll go through.
And the first thing that I'll go through is the land use amendment, and this amendment is from low-density residential to office designation for use as a dental and construction office. The surrounding property uses currently are light industrial, medium-density apartment, low-density apartment, kind of surrounding the subject tract. I apologize. The surrounding areas are developed for those uses, so there's to the, I apologize. To the north is the low-density apartment buildings, as well as to the east, and then to the south is the commercial designations, and across the street of 36th Ave is the industrial. For the rezoning, the land is currently zoned A2, and the subject parcels to the north are zoned RM6 for apartments. Across the way to the west is RM2. To the south is a PUD that is currently for commercial use but has not been developed, and again, across the way to the east is industrial uses. So, the intent of the project is to develop a two-story office building with a 3,000-square foot footprint to be used for a dental office and the construction office. The office, dental office use and construction office are allowed under the rezoning that they are requesting, which is the office institutional district. The applicant is prepared to meet all of the parking, landscaping, signage, lighting, sanitation, and fencing wall requirements as per the zoning code, as well as the exterior materials. You can see this is a satellite image directly on top of the building, so there was a landscaping business here that has been removed, and you can see that this ingress egress driveway will be taken out with this project, and in its place will return a single ingress egress, which the city traffic engineer has said is preferable. This is looking across 36th, so you can see that there's current industrial uses. This is looking north, so you can see kind of on the left-hand side there, that's existing housing. Across the street to the right is a commercial office. This is the property as it exists today. Looking back through to the west, you can see that there's low residential housing. In between the property and the low residential housing is an area being used as a detention pond, and so there will be fencing along that line because it is required by the zoning ordinance, as the area is still zoned residential, but there will be a gap underneath that fence to leave room for drainage. And then this is looking south, towards south on 36th Ave, and you can see on the right-hand side there, that is that existing PUD that has not been developed, and to the other side is the existing industrial. This is the proposed site plan. The applicant is proposing 14 parking spots, and you can see that the building was originally designed to be a one-story structure, but due to issues with locating the dumpster for sanitation, we did make it a two-story building, and this is the image of kind of the proposed facade for that structure. The applicant can come up and do some more talking on his, and staff will be available for questions.
Thank you. Any questions by commissioners for staff? Okay, seeing none, I would take an applicant presentation if there is one. It's not required. Are there any questions by commissioners for the applicant on this project? Okay, seeing none, then, we would move to any audience comments. Planning Commission discussion? Or a motion?
I make a motion to approve.
I second it.
Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I would take a vote.
Commissioner McCowen.
Yes.
Commissioner McDaniel.
Yes.
Commissioner Brewer.
Yes.
Commissioner Kendall.
Yes.
Commissioner Griffith.
Yes.
Commissioner McLaur.
Yes.
And Commissioner Byrd.
Yes.
Carries seven to zero.
We are now moving to items six, seven, and eight, and just as a reminder, we have a commissioner that is recusing. Item number six, consideration of approval, acceptance, rejection amendment and/or postponement of R-2425-91, a resolution of the Council of the City of Norman, Oklahoma, mending the Norman 2025 Land Use and Transportation Plan so as to remove part of the southeast quarter of Section 7 Township 9 North, Range 2 West of the Indian Meridian, Cleveland County, Oklahoma, from the low-density residential designation and place the same in the commercial designation and future urban service area and place the same in current urban service area, 281 West Tecumseh Road. Item number seven, consideration of approval, acceptance, rejection amendment and/or postponement of ordinance O-2425-26, an ordinance of the Council of the City of Norman, Oklahoma, mending Section 36-201 of the Code of the City of Norman so as to remove the southeast quarter of Section 7 Township 9 North, Range 2 West of the Indian Meridian to Norman, Cleveland County, Oklahoma, from the A2 Rural Agricultural District and place the same in the PUD Planned Unit Development District and providing for the severability thereof, 281 West Tecumseh Road. And item number eight, consideration of approval, acceptance, rejection amendment and/or postponement of PP-2425-8, consideration of a preliminary plat submitted by G2SOK Investments LLC, Blue Surveying Engineering Environmental, for Tecumseh Road Storage, a Planned Unit Development for approximately 5.93 acres of property located at 281 West Tecumseh Road. I'll take the staff presentation.
Hello again. So, this project is to change the land use from low-density residential to commercial designation and from future urban service area to current urban service area. Currently surrounding the subject tract is completely low residential uses as for the Norman 2025 Land Use and Transportation Plan, and it has primarily been that way for the past several years. It's been very slow to develop in this area, and what has developed is lower-density residential as per the plan. So, to, commercial. With regards to the rezoning, this would be a rezoning from A2 agricultural to PUD, Planned Unit Development, and you can see there is some planned unit development to the north of the tract. That would be with the Little Rivers Trails addition. And then to the south, we have R1, which is the Tecumseh Ridge, so that is low-density residential. The PUD is described as meeting all requirements for parking, landscaping, signage, lighting, sanitation utilities, and fencing and walls as described by the City of Norman Code. They will be providing six parking spaces with the project. There will be, the proposed project has 12 storage unit buildings. I'll skip real quick to the site plan, and you can see that there's a detention pond across the north side of the project that separates the buildings from the existing residential. The nearest building shown, I believe, is 40 feet from the existing residential. They will have one point of ingress and egress along West Tecumseh. To kind of go back to the environs, this is along Tecumseh looking west towards the property. This is Tecumseh looking east towards the property, so that red barn kind of on the right-hand side is the existing property. This right here is, we heard at the pre-development meeting, there were several concerns about drainage, and so this kind of shows the topography going towards the housing units to the north. This is the existing property as it is today, and then this is looking across Tecumseh to the south with those existing low residential homes. This project has received 42.6% comments of protest from the neighboring tracts as well.
Thank you. Any questions by commission for staff? All right, seeing none, I would take the applicant presentation.
Good evening, Commissioners. Gunner Joyce with Reeger Sadler Joyce on behalf of Storage Oklahoma, the applicant here. And just as we heard, this is a rezoning, a 2025 comp plan request and a preliminary plat, so three items that we'll vote on tonight. As you can see, this is just under six acres north of Tecumseh, and we are west of Porter, as you can see on site. And the request is a PUD. The comp plan amendment to commercial is really because the current comp plan, Norman 2025, adopted in 2004, is at this point outdated. The city is actively working on a new comp plan of how we look at uses throughout the city. We're not really requesting commercial as like a general blanket zoning on this site, and we'll get into that with the PUD. We are retaining a lot of the allowances and all of the. We are retaining a lot of the allowances and all of the uses that are existing today in A2, except for one additional allowable use. So, we are not rezoning to full commercial, retail, restaurants, anything of that nature. This is just one additional allowable use, self-storage. Here's the site plan that was presented at the pre-development meeting. As you guys all are aware, the process is a pre-development meeting where notice goes out 350 feet. The neighbors showed up, and the number-one reoccurring comment that we heard was drainage concerns. And so, the applicant went to work and immediately increased drainage in a substantial way on the site. So, this was the original presentation. You can see there's proposed detention along the west edge, and then, there was a smaller detention pond in the northwest corner that was going to capture the runoff that went to the north. This works under the city's ordinances, so this is a two-code design that the civil engineer did. However, hearing all the drainage concerns, this applicant went to the civil engineer and said, "Let's make sure that is absolutely not only an issue, but is one of the major improvements that we can give to the neighborhood." And so, they have increased the detention pond on the north by 140%. It now goes all the way across the north boundary up there. We had a building line off the north of 20 feet. The reason it was 20 feet is that was A2 standard, so we just took the zoning that was in place. A residential two-story house could have been built there 20 feet off the property line. A shed in A2 could go five feet off that property line, so we had mirrored those setbacks in the original draft. After hearing, again, the concerns at planning commission, this applicant went back to the drawing board and doubled the setback to 40 feet. That is the setback on the preliminary plat, but the actual site plan in the closest building is 75 feet now off the property line. So, a substantial increase in the buffer from the property line to the buildings and a substantial increase of the detention pond along the north. Here is a preliminary rendering. If you remember, this applicant, Storage Oklahoma, came in front of you guys about a year ago with their most recent project. They've done a couple different locations in Norman, and they are very neighborhood-conscious, and their design is to mirror residential, mirror neighborhoods. And so, this is not your typical storage facility that you see throughout the city that is just metal buildings. Usually, you see that neon yellow or neon green to attract the consumer driving down the street. This is a residential pitched roof product. The back of all the buildings is masonry, and all of this is locked into a detailed PUD narrative, which is really just like what happened on 36th Avenue. So, a lot of those same things that you may remember from a year ago are into this again. So, let's walk through some of those detailed PUD development criterias. We have agreed, again, on this site to max the height at one story. Originally, when we submitted, again, we had contemplated going to some two-story buildings. Hearing from the neighbors at pre-development, we took that two-story allowance out and locked it in at one story. A2 development, just by right, under the current zoning, would allow two-story buildings, so that is a concession from the existing development allowances. We have locked in, like I mentioned, the specific color scheme that you see on screen, so if this project ever changed hands 20 years in the future, 30 years in the future, they could not paint it a eyesore, neon orange, go-to-all-metal. They would have to come back and rezone just to change the substantial color scheme from anything that is not the earth-tone masonry that you see there. Again, increase that landscape buffer and that north building setback substantially after hearing the concerns at pre-development. We have a detailed landscaping plan that is actually the next slide, and we've drafted in, this is again, like you may remember from 36th Avenue, that this applicant is committed to reaching out to the city forester at construction phase, to working with the city for species type that is best served on this property and best locations on this property. We have masonry requirements that resemble that residential look drafted into the PUD. This one is something that, again, I've never done in any zoning except for this specific applicant. It is climate-controlled equipment, so for any of the AC and climate-controlled buildings, it cannot be on the roof, so you wouldn't drive by and see like an ugly HVAC sticking up out of the top of the building. They have to be shielded and on the ground. The developer will take over the maintenance of the existing fences on the north property line. There is no dumpster on site, so that is a major benefit to not having these people that use the storage centers, you know, dumping out things that are now unwanted when they're ready to move or stop using the storage. A lot of times, they'll just throw them in the dumpster on site. So, this specific user does not have a dumpster to prohibit that. They will privately control the office trash and then take it out themselves. They're doing the same thing on 36th Street as well. And then, again, that substantially over-engineered detention pond along the north goes way over what code requires with that over 140% increase above the code. And we have adopted Norman's full cutoff commercial outdoor lighting standards that require a photometric plan at building permit phase that would show all the way to 0.2-foot candles of where light goes on site and prohibits spillover to the neighbors. There are also no pole signs on the site, so all the lights are attached to the buildings pointed down with those full cutoff lighting fixtures. We have a slide that will show you a mock of what that looks like. Here's the preliminary landscape plan. It is a plan to provide approximately 120 new trees to the site, and again, the developer will consult with the city forester, determine the best locations and species that will thrive on this site. The oversized detention pond goes above and beyond what would be required by code, and as you can see, this is a snippet of the drainage analysis that was provided with this application. By increasing the size to the north, the flow that would be experienced to the neighborhood to the north compared to pre-development conditions, so that line above there says, shows a reduction of over half of the runoff they experienced today. So, that is before development on the site, after development, and that increased detention pond is put to the north, over 52% flow reduction for the two-year storm event, upwards almost to 60% reduction in a 100-year event. Lighting, just in detail, this is the commercial outdoor lighting standard. It is a substantial code. Norman is one of the frontrunners in protecting neighborhoods throughout the metro area and beyond because of their essentially dark-skY commercial light ordinance. It requires full cutoff light fixtures so that there is not a spillover, and that is an image down there that shows a mock-up of what you could expect it to look like at night. All of the lights are attached to the building and pointed down. We've heard more about lighting on this one than we did at the 36th Avenue location, so we've agreed on this one to even shut off completely the lights in the back third of this facility. So, only the ones in the front, 2/3 of the building would still be on or motion-censored after hours. The hours of operation would stop at 10:00 PM, so at 10:01, the back third completely off. And again, that is with the commercial outdoor lighting standards, so want to take out any risk that those neighbors experience, any spillover of any kind at night. It's one thing to say, yeah, we want to mirror residential look and masonry and residential pitched roofs. This applicant has a track record of actually doing so, and so, here are two images of their other locations where they have done this in the area. The neighbors to the north, you saw that one slide that shows the topography. Here it is viewing from the north, looking back at the site. And again, the number-one reoccurring comment that we've heard, and in the protest letters, the number-one comment that we continue to see is drainage issues. One thing that is completely separate from this proposal is it's been discovered that the drainage plan in that neighborhood is perhaps not satisfactory, not up to what it should be. That development group is taking care of that. We have brought that to their attention, and they're actively working on a correction to that completely separate from this application. As you can see, we've been paying attention to possible line of sight from the three most impacted neighbors, the ones that share a property line. With now the change of the detention pond going all the way across the north and the closest building being 75 feet, we've run sightlines that you can see, and so, here's Google Earth from those three homes with that rather large architectural block retaining wall, and then, the six-foot, seven-foot fence on top of that. Here's what it looks like from the street view, so substantial increase in topography there. We would put in our new landscaping on, obviously, our side of the fence, and then, there's the increased stormwater pond, and then, 75 feet from that property line will be the first building that is with a residential-style pitched roof and limited to single-story. So, we have made sure that it is not anything that somebody would be able to see from standing in their backyard. That's obviously from their porch, so as you get closer to the backyard fence, that line of sight goes much higher. So, if you're standing at the backyard of those three houses, you would not see these buildings. Just to summarize, it's a PUD that requests one additional allowable use to the A2 allowances, so not full general commercial. We've mandated all of those things that I've walked you through, full cutoff lighting fixtures, specific color scheme, single-story development, substantial landscape buffer. This applicant has reached out to the neighbors and the affected property owners multiple times, both right after we filed, after pre-development, after we received protest letters, has continued to try and work with them to the best we can, and we think we present a application that addresses all the concerns that we've heard. So, happy to take any questions you may have.
Thank you. Questions by commission for the applicant? We, in the protest letters, there were a few comments from neighbors I was hoping maybe we could also touch on. We can, I can list those now, or we can go one at a time. There was a lot of discussion about concerns about crime, pests, like rodents and things. Property value also came up as well, so maybe we can touch on some of those items, and also, the commercial neighboring areas vacancy rates and case use for, commercial case use for this property.
Perfect. Let's go one at a time, then, so I can make sure I don't miss one or something. So, hit me with the first one.
How about we do crime?
Perfect, yeah. So, Brian, I'll have you do a little bit here. I know that you've only had six documented issues in the last 20 years that you've operated storage facilities. I think four of which are at one location that is probably in a less desirable place, and we don't expect that you have.
I'm Brian Stanbeck. With our facilities, when people come in to rent units, we require them to provide us with a valid driver's license, and if they don't have that, then we will actually run a background check on the person before we will lease to them. We don't lease to anybody who has a trailer or an RV, so there's nothing like that out there as well. Our crime, like I said, when I spoke with Gunnar, we had six incidents. We had one facility that was truly, you know, a break-in. We had a large gentleman go over the fence with a skinnier guy. He got in front of our door, he deadlifted the door, and when he did, it just crumpled, and the little guy went underneath, grabbed some stuff, and went out. They were eventually caught about two weeks later, and, because they got greedy. The other stuff we've ever, most of the stuff we ever see is domestic, so we've had Jordans stolen out of units that were owned by like a shoe company, but it was an employee that stole them, came back in and stole them. We've had petty cash stolen out of a unit before because it was, again, an employee who came back in and stole it. Most of the stuff's been isolated. We've had people who've gotten fights, and they would break into a unit and steal the checkbook out. That's the type of stuff we see. Most of our units are built in areas that don't have high crime rates in the first place, and so, our design is set up to, you know, we have, I think this facility has 60-plus cameras on it as well, so the crime's typically not an issue for us at all. What was the second one? Oh, the rodents, yeah. Rodents, no. We have all the mouse block, we go through all of that, and every unit's got it all the way through it. I see the bills for them, the managers are on-site, and they will put that in every one of the units. We've not ever had a true rodent issue, other than we did have one up in Steelwater where we had a family of skunks that came into our facility. We spent two weeks and removed, I think it was 13 skunks, and one house cat in the process. They were removed from the facility. Rodents aren't a big deal. Now, I cannot say for a minute that a raccoon or a mouse won't come across the site. There's typically, if we had a dumpster in the back with a bunch of filth or trash or anything such as that, if we allowed dumping or anything on our site, it could happen. It's not allowable. So, what was the other issue?
Maybe any insect? Do you do some spraying and treatment regularly for those as well?
Yes. I think they typically spray four times a year. It's paid for, and the company just comes in and takes care of it for us. We don't do it ourselves. Okay?
Thank you. What about property value?
Property value. So, generally, when you look at a commercial property and a residential property, they don't correlate. The commercial properties, even if you call the county assessor, you have to go to the commercial side or the residential side. They don't, they don't, it coexists together. Ours won't affect anybody's property value as far as going up or down. We've had, I've had facilities all over Oklahoma that we've actually sold properties up against the storage facilities, and I could bring somebody in to tell you the property values don't, they don't change because of them. This one's far enough off the line. It should be low-impact, it should not have any, any impact on that.
Just to add to that, too, with the residential, the assessment value is capped, so if you have your homestead exemption, you only get up to 3% a year. It could be 5% if you're not. So, the assessment value, year for year, is already capped through statutes, and also, the assessor will only go in and really reassess if like a building permit is pulled to improve the house or if it changes hands with a sale. So, again, those are completely separate with what we would be doing on this site and residential to the north.
And then, commercial case use occupancy that you typically see, and why, you know, is there a need for this type of product in Norman? What type of vacancy do you typically see?
Sure. In Norman, the first one we did, or the one we did last year on 36th, I think that was the first storage facility that had been built on the west side of town. I'm going to say it had been, Sissons was, it was probably 18 years, so there was definitely a need for it over there. All the facilities, we shop them, and they're all sitting in the 90% to 92% range. Same thing for the ones that were around right now. Our competitor does have the, they'll go around and raise their rates and try and remove people. It's just common, unfortunately. That's not something we've, we've ever done. We sit there and we'll take people who get removed from those facilities. It actually works quite well. But there's definitely a need. There hasn't been a storage facility built on the east side of town. The one up by Land Run would have been the last one. I'm going to say that was 12 or 15 years ago.
Commissioner, just to clarify that, there's a financial incentive for some of the larger self-storage companies to manufacture vacancies, so they raise their rates to where some will cancel because they can go to a smaller or cheaper unit down the road, but most will continue, kind of like a gym membership. You raise the rates, and people don't take the step to cancel, or Netflix, because I still haven't canceled Netflix. And vacancies will happen, but since they raise rates and people still stay, they're making more money with the vacancy than, than they would have if they stayed at like 95% with their current rate.
Thank you. That was all of the questions I had. Were there any other questions for the applicant from commissioners?
I do have a couple of questions. This may be a question for Brian. The, I know you touched on insect control and rodent control. Can you just walk us through your, your self-maintenance plan specific to the detention pond, just given that the size of it, and I know that that can collect trash and other debris and things like that, so?
So, we have a manager that's on-site seven days a week. We don't have somebody 24 hours, but they typically will work until 6 o'clock. Our general staff will tour the facility three different times during the day. They have specific, you know, job performance that they have to go around and pick up all the trash. All of the yard maintenance and everything, because everything will be sprinkled on these trees, so we have to run, you know, sprinkler system all the way around this thing. We have a lawn crew that's hired. I don't have my staff mowing the yard, so we have crews that come in, they come in once a week, and they remove everything as far as the grass, mulching, I mean, they do all of it. So, the sites are just kept clean. The back pond, as long as it's not had water in it recently, would be mowed every time. And there was one other thing, there were a bunch of trees on the backside of the site. We're going to try and save those trees. They're existing, and you can see them, but we're, our goal is to try and save those existing trees that are there and not remove them if we can. But we, I mean, we have staff that's hired that does nothing but mow and take care of the facility.
My next question was related to noise, specific to anything within the facilities themselves. Is there Is there, kind of two questions with this, are there power outlets inside of these storage facilities? And then, do you have noise restrictions if someone were to use the facility for, you know, had a generator running in there or something?
Right. So probably the best one we've ever had was somebody used it to play a band. And it was up in Moore and they would literally show up and, and they had a drum set in there and they would get after it. And they were asked to leave the facility. That type of stuff, we just don't stand for. The money is, it's just not, it's not any good for us. The noise, it's just not there. It, I don't know how to explain it other than it's boring. We have, we'll average, when our site is full, we'll average about 20 to 25 cars a day through the facility. There are studies out there that show that storage has the second lowest travel rate within the facility, and it's only second to a AT&amp;T tower or a cell tower. So a cell tower actually has less traffic onsite as a commercial property. It's, it's, most people will pull up, they'll get their stuff, and they'll leave. If we have somebody in there that's being a nuisance, and I think we've shown our willingness to work with the, the community, if they came to us and said something, we would remove the person without a question. So we just don't have anything like that.
Thank you. Any further questions for the applicant by commissioners? Okay. Seeing none, I would go to our audience comments, and I'm gonna start us with Callie Zingalia. I apologize. Callie Zingali? Sorry. Thank you. And just a reminder, if you'll please say your name and your address when you come to the microphone. If you want a 30-second warning, let us know. Otherwise, at the end of three minutes, we'll thank you for your comments.
Is it possible to ask to not go first?
I could put you on the bottom if you'd like.
There's a reason behind it.
That's fine.
Something has not been discussed yet, and I, my speech, I need to stay on track.
We will save those comments for, at the end. I'll move to Christina Keenan.
All right. Hello, everyone. Christina Keenan. I am at 220 Bolverde, so my property is basically a cutting corner to where this is gonna be set up. I am a mom to two young girls with one on the way, husband, and we do not want this by our backyard. We are primarily concerned for the safety and the security of our children. We do not want strangers being so close, understanding that there is death.
You can't hear her.
Sorry. Is this, is that better? Okay, thank you. So we understand that there is a 40-foot buffer that they're putting in. However, we are keenly aware that our neighborhood has had issues with people hopping the fence line before. We have had break-ins in our neighborhood, and so we believe that even having that buffer there, you're still inviting people to come in. Not just to come into our neighborhood, but into the storage facility itself by using our neighborhood as a route to bounce around. We are also then afraid of, for our children, them basically being cased. We don't want, like I said, strangers in the backyard. But we also, considering that this is gonna be a secure storage facility, do not want cameras facing our backyard. We do not want our children to be on camera. Our young children, I'm sure as many of you know, like to run around in their diapers. And we don't want topless children on cameras anywhere. So we are very concerned for that. We are also concerned about the light and the noise pollution. We are aware that this has been somewhat addressed by what I think he called the spillover lights. However, I think this is more of a lose-lose situation, because if the lights go off, who's gonna be watching? You know, seeing security cameras in the dark, you know, we've got the Ring doorbell cameras, you can only see so much. So if something happens at night, you know, how are you gonna catch that? And two, like I said, lose-lose. You leave the lights on, while they're gonna be, even with the spillover lights, the glow, we're gonna be able to see it from our bedrooms, our bathroom, or, sorry, our, you know, living rooms. And then, you know, putting the kids in the bath is gonna be difficult because the lights are there, putting the kids to bed, it'd be difficult, you know, because they see the lights on, they wanna stay outside and play. And also, it was mentioned, property value. Property value is not just a number, it is how we value where we live. We were told ours was developed by Landmark, and we were told that the land behind us would not be developed. That's one of the reasons that we picked the plot that we did. They even told us that they tried to buy the lot, but the person said no. And we figured if we have anything in our backyard, we'd rather it be another family, not a commercial facility. You know, we had mentioned the drainage. You know, even though they said that's gonna be helped, they're gonna help us with our retaining wall, they're gonna help us with the pond, ponds leach. And that whole area, unless you live there, you don't know, it floods really bad. It's like a mudslide back there. So even if you put in brand-new trees, brand-new landscaping, even with the pond, ponds leach, things fall down, or, you know, slip down. And having a giant concrete pad in the back of our neighborhood is not gonna be good for anyone that lives there. So I think that's about my time. All right.
Thank you very much. If I could move to Russell Doughty.
I'm in 304 Mayberry Drive. And I actually want to talk about a slightly different issue, kind of bird's eye view, and that's trust. And when we bought our house, we trusted that the neighborhood was developed properly and it wasn't. The planning commission signed off on as-built plans, saying that there was a five-foot flume behind our house that does not exist. Before closing, I had the developer and someone from the planning commission come out and say, "No, you don't need any drainage infrastructure back here." I begged for drainage infrastructure when we were closing on our house. There was a ditch that was dug in my backyard that was filled in and graded off, and I said, "You can't do that." I'll go back to the, the photo here, and you can see that very large pond, okay? You can see on the north side of that large pond that there is a spillway, and you can see actually standing water and mud as it snakes around, and that dumps right into our backyards. The drainage infrastructure that was supposed to be there was supposed to handle that. And we have lost trust in the builder. We've lost trust in the city and the planners to come out and, and inspect. When you buy a property, you're not supposed to go off and do homework and inspect the entire neighborhood to see what infrastructure has been built. Am I supposed to fly cameras down the storm drains to see if there's actually pipes in there? I'm not an expert on plats, okay? I have a doctor in biology, not urban planning, okay? And our trust has been broken by the city and by the developer. And I'm kind of surprised that no one asked the question, "Well, why is a storage facility willing to volunteer to go in and put in a flume that doesn't exist?" Right? So I know it seems like it might be a separate issue, but the larger bird's eye view is that there's a lack of trust. How are we supposed to trust the planning commission and your inspectors when our neighborhood wasn't built right? And, and Brian, and he has been listening to us. He's volunteered to come in and fix these issues. But how can we trust that those issues are gonna be fixed, that the planning commission's gonna pay attention to those, that they're gonna go out and inspect this property and make sure things are done right? Why do you think that 40 people protested this? It's not just because of lights or critters. We have a complete lack of trust here. And this is a much broader issue. And had Brian not been so considerate, thankfully to us and everybody here, he's local and he cares. At least, he's showing that he cares. And we're getting a lot of lip service now. There's nothing on paper. But if this was a developer from California, they wouldn't give two rodents about the drainage issues.
Thank you very much for your comments.
And there would be a lot more than just people here. There'd be a lot of attorneys standing.
I'm so sorry. That's the end of your time, and we're gonna go to the next person.
I appreciate it.
No, thank you.
But the city shares some responsibility for that.
As a point of order, I'm gonna have to ask that we end that comment. Thank you. Moving, we have our, the last item I've received was Callie Zingali. Thank you very much.
I'm Callie Zingali. I live at 224 Bolverde. I never imagined that I'd be standing here, but I don't know what else to do. I feel defeated, unheard, abandoned by a system that should be protecting my family. But instead, I'm faced to fight for the bare minimum. Let's be honest, hi Lily, this meeting is just a formality. We all know this is all but signed. Every one of these are just checkboxes to you. The ones that are going through, the very ones that we're going through tonight, were put in here for a reason. Not to be an inconvenience, not to be an empty procedural step, but to be a check and balance, to make sure that this process is fair, just, and ethical. Because homeowners have to fight tooth and nail just to keep our neighborhoods residential, but businesses don't have to fight at all. They simply pay a filing fee just to push it through. Then what exactly are we doing here? When my family bought our home, we weren't just buying walls and a roof, we were investing in stability, safety, and the future of our children. We did our research. We chose this site very carefully. We trusted the process. We paid extra money for a premium lot, a decision that was supposed to provide my kids with a safe and peaceful place to grow up. And yet, here I am, being told that I should just accept what's happening, that I should be grateful that it's only storage units, that I should be grateful the developer is willing to install the flume. Do you hear how absurd this sounds? The storage for, the storage unit isn't a favor. The storage unit is what it takes to correct a mistake that should never have happened. This storage unit gives me what was originally approved by this committee. It was originally approved by the people that signed off on it. This is not a solution. This is an attempt to cover up a failure. The moment I showed my videos to Brian Stanbeck, his response was immediate. This is not okay. This needs to be fixed immediately. But that's not what I heard from Ideal Homes, even though he does own part of that, too. It's not what I heard from the City of Norman Planning Department. It's not what I heard from the city engineers, public works, or even the city council. I got excuses instead. I got deflection and bureaucratic run-arounds. I got that this is not my area of expertise. Everyone has agreed that this is bad, but not a single person has told me what to do, what can be done about it. And now I'm being told that I just need to accept that this land is going to be changed and eventually it will be rezoned, and that it's only a matter of time. So let me get this straight. First, I find out my dream home is not what it was promised. Then I have to uncover missing infrastructure ourselves. And now I'm supposed to stop fighting and advocate for a lesser evil? What kind of system is this? Where is the accountability? Where is the integrity? Where is the protection of the families that have infested in that place right behind there? It's full of kids that are depending on you guys tonight.
Ms. Zingali, thank you so much for your comments. That's your time. Were there any other, I'm so sorry, if we could please keep applause to a hold. Were there any other parties that did not already turn in a card that wanted to speak on this item? Because you can come bring that up now if you wanted to. Okay. Thank you very much. Moving on to planning commission discussion.
I'd like to clarify, is it 40 feet or 75 feet back that you are going to be building? From that, from the back fence line, not from the street?
It's 75 feet to the nearest building. The 40 number comes from the preliminary plat, if you see here, so I might be able to zoom in tight here. So right there at the top, I don't think you can see the cursor. If you can see the north proposed detention area, the start of that says 40-foot build line, so the start of that north detention area is 40 feet off the property line. So then the buildings are 75 feet off the property line.
Okay. And is there, so there's fencing on top of the decorative wall?
That's right.
And then, will that back pond be fenced entirely?
So this is probably the best way to see it. So the fencing exists, and then there'll be the landscaping, so that's 40 feet, and then the start of the pond. And then between the building, which is 75 feet, and the end of the stormwater pond, the developer likely puts in like a wrought iron decorative metal.
For visibility, to make, see if there's trash.
Exactly right.
See if there's trash.
Exactly right.
Okay. So between where anyone storing items are and the backyard, there's 75 feet and two fences?
That's correct.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure, I heard 40 feet in some of the comments, and I just wanted to make sure I hadn't misunderstood before. And then can you clarify on light concerns and camera concerns? Where are those lights gonna be aimed and where are those cameras gonna be aimed? Because I, I would understand as a mother of children, those same questions.
Definitely. Brian, do you want the cameras? The lights are all aimed downward and attached to the building. So the best example, if you look all the way to the rear of this, you can see the last light is basically, kind of looks like a garage door pointing down. That's what it would look like on the interior. And again, on this site, we're happy to shut off the back third, so there would be no lights even on the end, and it wouldn't spill over because they're below the roof line with the full cutoff light fixtures. So nothing.
Okay, so there's no posts?
That's exactly right.
It is, okay.
And you want to talk about cameras?
And downward end, okay.
Yeah, all the cameras are aimed inside. We don't have any on the outside or looking towards our fences or anything such as that. Where their properties are, no way. We would never point our, our cameras that direction.
Okay.
Okay.
And then, let me see if there was anything else. I took notes. I didn't want anyone thinking that I was like texting while you were talking, I was taking notes, you know, in case there was anything mentioned other than all the letters I had read through already. And then, to issue of the flume, it being promised, and concerns about trust, and it's not written anywhere, would you consider having it written in your PUD that that happens first, or that it is a requirement?
Sure. So when I, when I met with everybody, I said these were two separate issues, because I was gonna do one with, with regard to the flume, whether the storage went or not. So with the flume, we've worked really hard. We've only had this for a week in my, in my office. We have two solutions. And we have an inside-the-fence solution that exists. We also have an outside-the-fence solution that exists. We're trying, we're trying to get to the outside-the-fence solution if we can. The inside-the-fence solution is already there. There's a drainage easement that runs down it, and we can put the flume in, and we will commit to put the flume in. Our goal was to have it started by the end of the month and completed by the first week of April or the second week of April. We're not waiting until the storage facility gets built or anything such as that. So our goal was to attack that as quickly as we could. So we have been all over that. And like I said, we have two solutions. We're hoping to use the outside-the-fence solution because it, it works so much better. But we can't make any promises because we still have just a few things to tweak on it to see if we can, see if we can make it work.
Okay. So even if you don't put in writing for sake of their assurance and the need to feel trust is being restored, is there any way to say just that you are addressing pre-existing?
What he was just saying is that there's essentially two solutions. One may be better than the other because it could be on our side of the property.
Right.
That would require us, though, to go to the neighbor that's to the west and acquire an easement from them.
Okay.
And so we don't want to commit that we'll do that approach without having that easement in hand.
Right.
We can go north of the property line because there's already the detention easement. We don't want to put it in the PUD just because a lot of times we work with staff, there's non-zoning items that get difficult to enforce or confusing because the zoning stays with the property 20, 30 years from now, but we're happy to put it in a letter or something to get it to staff.
Okay.
Yeah, just, again, to keep them separate.
No, and I understand not spelling out how you're doing it, because, I mean, things can change even when you are starting construction on whatever Plan A or Plan B is.
Exactly.
But just the assurance and writing somewhere that it is being addressed.
Yeah, we're happy to do it.
Okay. All right. And then, and then I, I just want to comment, to public comment, that it's hard. We, we are all volunteers and we're, we all, I know, I can speak highly of everyone that I serve with, we all do a lot of due diligence to look into every project, and we try to ask questions, not that you see, even before we come here. And, and this committee is not like zoning or some other one where our vote is a deciding vote. What, what we are responsible for voting is whether it goes forward. What we are responsible for voting is whether it goes forward for council to review or not. And the basis that the criteria that we have to look at is, does it fit in with the Norman 2020 plan? And so in looking, or sorry, 2025, in the development plan that preexisted, you know, it's a three-year term, preexisted me being here at this time. So I just want you to know that we don't come here to just be like, let's say yes to everything and move it forward. And us saying yes also does not necessarily mean it's going to happen, or it's not going to happen if we say no, because council ultimately decides. So regardless of the outcome tonight, there is that second hearing where that decision of yes or no, regardless of our yes or no, indicates what action happens next. And so just know, we are looking out for our neighbors. We view you all as our neighbors, as well as the desire of what is appropriate development for our city, for the benefit of our city. And that's a big responsibility that we all bear. So we take it seriously.
I had a question for staff. And if this is not known, that's fine, but when is this anticipated to go to council for a vote? And I don't know, it's two weeks or?
Typically, an application will leave planning commission, and they will go first reading the following month, but an applicant controls their application, and they can ask to be fast-tracked as well. So if that's the case, they would end up on first reading for council's second meeting in March, and the vote would be the first meeting in April. But that is up to the applicant, how they can control their application.
Okay. And the reason I ask is related to the flume, because it's indicated that there's potential to put that in by the end of the month. I know that I'm going to make a recommendation as part of a motion or anything, but that would, it seems as though if that's possible to do by that date, and then that prior to a council vote, that would be prudent. So then that way, that's one less concern that would be considered as part of the application when it's considered by council.
I had some follow-up items from some of the other commissioners. This would be a question, I guess, for the applicant, for specifically the concerns about cameras. Would you be willing to share the actual views of your cameras with those neighbors on request at any point? And going into the future, could they maybe make an appointment and see the camera views themselves to what is and isn't visible? Okay. Thank you. Yeah. And then just for comments about some of the process, since we talked about the process from here, and to reiterate, we definitely don't feel that our job is just to check a box here in our role. There is following here the first and second reading by city council that was referenced. The first reading typically is not an item that you would go and speak on the way you have tonight or have those items. It is actually discussed in length at the second reading. So you do get notices of those if you're within the radius as well. You don't get -- they are available publicly on there, too. City council members also, being elected officials, do have contact information on the website. We are joined by a city council member tonight. So I know that they listen to many of their different meetings and things through the YouTube that's recorded, and I know that they do attend a lot of these as well. So in addition to the public forum comments, you can also visit with city council about your items as well. So making sure that you know about those options additionally. Are there any other commission discussion items? Seeing none, I would take a motion.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Is there any discussion on this motion? Any additional discussion on this motion? Commissioner Brewer, you alluded to maybe having a request for certain items earlier, so.
Oh, I, sorry, I said I don't, I'm not interested in making that recommendation as part of the motion. Sorry, I should clarify that, so. Yeah, yeah. I may have said that incorrectly, so.
Thank you. If no other discussion on the motion, I would take a vote.
Commissioner McClure?
Yes.
Commissioner Griffith?
Yes.
Commissioner Kendall?
Yes.
Commissioner Brewer?
Yes.
Commissioner McDaniel?
Yes.
And Commissioner Byrd?
Yes.
Motion passes six to zero.
Moving to our next items, number nine, 10, and 11. Item number nine, consideration of approval, acceptance, rejection amendment and/or postponement of resolution R-2425-92, a resolution of the Council of the City of Norman, Oklahoma, amending the Norman 2025 Land Use and Transportation Plan so as to remove part of the northwest quarter of Section 2, Township 9 North, Range 3 West of the Indian Meridian, Cleveland County, Oklahoma, from the mixed-use designation and parkland designation and place the same in the mixed-use designation from future urban service area to current urban service area, and removal from special planning area 4 near the southwest corner of the I-35 and West Indian Hills Road intersection. Item number 10, consideration of approval, acceptance, rejection amendment and/or postponement, ordinance O-2425-27, an ordinance of the Council of the City of Norman, Oklahoma, amending Section 36-201 of the Code of the City of Norman so as to remove the northwest quarter of Section 2, Township 9 North, Range 3 West of the Indian Meridian to Norman, Cleveland County, Oklahoma, from the A2 Rural Agricultural District and place the same in the PUD Planned Unit Development District and providing for the severability thereof near the southwest corner of I-35 and West Indian Hills Road intersection. And item number 11, consideration of approval, acceptance, rejection amendment and/or postponement of PP-2425-9, consideration of a preliminary plat submitted by Apex Properties LLC, SMC Consulting Engineer for the North Norman Village, a planned unit development for 130.76 acres of property generally located near the southwest corner of the I-35 and West Indian Hills Road intersection. And just as a reminder, we do have a commissioner recused for these items. And I'll take the staff presentation.
Hello, Justin Fish, Planning Department. I stated a wave of application for a Norman 2025 Land Use Amendment and Transportation Plan Amendment, my bad, for a property located at the southwest corner of Interstate 35 and West Indian Hills Road intersection. Sorry, there's a pop-up on the computer. So the applicant is requesting a change from the mixed-use and parkland designation to They are also requesting a change from future urban service area to the current urban service area, and they are requesting a removal from special planning area 4. The subject tract is currently mixed-use and parkland with lower denser residential to the west. This is what it would look like with the proposed change, just changing the whole lot to be one designation. Companies request we have a rezon application and consideration of a preliminary plat. They are requesting to rezon the property from A2 Rural Agricultural District to PUD Planned Unit Development. This change in zoning would allow the applicant and support them with a proposed mixed-use development on the site. This would include a variety of uses, not limited to retail offices and multifamily residential and single-family residential. This product will also be divided into four development areas. So currently, the subject tract is A2. There are R1 zonings to the west across Highway 35. There is some light industrial district, I1, and there are some PUDs to the north as well as the east with residential estate to the south. These are the existing land uses, single-family homes to the west and the south, and businesses to across the interstate to the east. This is the subject tract. There is a protest map for this. I believe it is 3.2%. Right here is looking north on 36th Avenue Northwest, looking south on 36th Avenue Northwest, looking east towards the subject tract, and looking west on 36th Avenue Northwest. This is a shot looking at the subject tract, looking south from Indian Hills Road, and this is just an overhead shot of the developments in the area. This is the preliminary plat, the preliminary site plan, the green space site plan, and the development areas. The applicant has prepared a presentation for the council or commission, and staff is also available for comments.
Thank you. Any questions by commission for staff? Seeing none, I would take the applicant presentation.
All righty. Thank you, Justin. Sean Rieger for the applicant here, along with Chris Anderson of SMC, BJ Hawkins, Gunnar. And you're in for a treat tonight because Richard McCown is going to take you through a lot of imagery that is really remarkable on this project. In fact, I think it's the largest PowerPoint I've ever submitted at about 190 meg because of Richard's drawings are so precise and incredible, and you're going to get to see that tonight. So you're only going to hear a little bit from me, and then you're going to see Richard's work, which is really quite astounding. So very proud of this project. This is a remarkable site, for one, at the southwest corner of I-35 and Indian Hills, tucked between 36th Avenue and I-35. You know, it's a site we've all driven by for a long time. We've seen it out there for a long time. Cotton's been grown on it for a long time, but it is about time to start looking at what we're going to do with this property. We know that the turnpike is rolling through here. We know that that interchange is going to be a massive interchange. In fact, they call it a high-five interchange that is coming there, five-tier interchange, similar to what you will see in Dallas, Texas, is coming on that intersection. And so what's going to happen on the property next to it? How are we going to plan for that? And Richard's done phenomenal work here to show you how we have basically layered it back to accommodate the turnpike, be planning for that properly, but also plan for significant housing growth, which we need in our community desperately. And we can do that in locations like this at a really significant scale and do it properly. So I'm excited to show this to you. Let's walk you through it. It's about 130 acres. As Justin showed you, this is, a current zoning is A2. Obviously, this is not a site that's going to stay a farm much longer, so I think A2, we can all agree on, is probably not the right zoning for this site. We're going to change it to a PUD is our proposal. And then the current 2025 plan was set aside as mixed-use, and you see that little green stripe around the edge. We have carefully kept that green area around the edge. That was not just a one-off or something that we disregarded, even though this plan is basically reaching the end of its day. Richard carefully has kept that green space around the perimeter. The mixed-use is also something that he has very carefully coordinated into the plan. This was set aside as what's called special planning area 4. And in 2025, there were special planning areas, about six of them or eight of them, I think, dotted around the community. And basically, what those special planning areas said was, these were important sites that we needed to look at carefully. When you read the special planning area 4, it basically says that this needs to be a mixed-use site that is walkable, that is carefully coordinated as a whole site. When you read it, it kind of talks about they don't want it broken up as just a bunch of little pieces that don't coordinate with each other. And so Richard's taken a great deal of time to make sure that we've met the spirit of that. When you look through it, it is basically shown, I didn't skip that, there we go. It's four different development areas, and this is just a visual of the site plan. We have much better imagery, as I said, that Richard has that you're going to see than what I'm going to show you here. But it is basically divided into four development areas. The very hard corner up at the upper left is number three. That is basically probably a service station, probably automobile service station, gas station. It could be restaurant. It could be retail. But basically, the uses that are put forth in the PUD for that are all forms of commercial and fairly intense, as you can imagine, a hard corner and a turnpike and a section line road. Development area number one is the bulk of the commercial, and that is basically all forms of commercial that you can imagine, of basically office hospitality, obviously a good site for hotels at the intersection that this is at, all forms of retail, restaurant, office, everything that you can imagine basically could be put on one, which is a natural spot for it because this will be basically fronting on two interstates, a turnpike and an interstate is where development area number one is going to front. Then we get into development area number two, which is the middle, and that is basically multifamily, very high-intensity multifamily. In that area of two, you see basically five, what we call donuts, of high-density multifamily that would have parking within it, inside of it, and then open space within it, too. And Richard's going to show you some really great imagery of that in just a little bit. Area number four, which is the yellow area to the lower left, is single-family housing, and that is basically all forms of single-family housing, including accessory dwelling units and a fairly compact model of single-family housing that is, has some really unique concepts that I don't think you've probably seen before, that Richard is going to show you in detail of how he plans on doing that. That's the housing units, just sort of called out by themselves. The center housing is basically five apartment complexes in dense form of about 300 units each, so about 1,500 units that we can put in the center of that property and basically compounded around, within all of these uses that are around it, with the high intensity of commercial next to the turnpike and the interstate, and the low intensity, low intensity of the single-family residential to the left. The single-family residential is about 143 units. I think we've actually had that as a different number floating around 143, 150. But basically, these are small lot concepts of fairly dense single-family. When you look at the preliminary plat, you could see these are basically large plats. This is an item I always show you because this is what you're actually recommending for approval, is the plat and the site plan. This is the plat, and you could see it is basically the residential lots on the lower left of about 143 lots, the multifamily in the center, which is five lots, and then 22 commercial lots all around the periphery of the north and east side of the site. The building setbacks, this is something that we're going to discuss tonight in some detail, and Richard's going to show you some examples of it because we are at a point where staff has recommended differently than us on this specific issue as to the setback of the single-family housing down on that lower left. What we have requested tonight is a minimum of a four-foot setback permitted, except for garages, would be set back a minimum of 20 feet. So, and then the rear would be 10 feet, and then the side could be zero, three feet, or six foot. The area of concern that has been discussed quite a bit, and we want to go ahead and move for what we've asked for, is the front. Staff has suggested that they're concerned about a sightline of somebody backing out and for a small front setback that maybe they couldn't see properly when they're backing out of their property. We believe we're okay with it. We're going to show you examples. Richard is going to show you significant examples of very small setbacks on the front property, and these, of course, are residential streets that you see on the left that are not main arteries. These are not high-traveled, high-speed arteries that would probably be a concern in that moment. But in this case, we think we can do it properly, and I'm going to let Richard show you examples of exactly how we're going to do that. This is the green space. Really quite a lot of green space here. We went to Parks Board, too, by the way, of course, with this size of development. On this type of a development, when we're this large, we're not allowed to do fee-in-lua for parks. We're required to do a parkland solution on sites this big. And so what Richard has done, and the developer has basically put the park down in the middle, and you see that kind of teal shade, that is the public park. So we've wrapped the public park with trails all around the detention pond, and that is a wet pond. And then we've had significant park space in a large open area right next to the pond on the south end there, and then a large area right in the center of those multifamily housing concepts, and that's roughly the size of a football field. That's a large, open, flat park space right in the middle, and then one at the bottom. And the one at the bottom, we think, is nice. One, it accommodates the drains, but two, it reflects upon the housing addition to the south. You might recall previously, and about a year ago, there was another development to the south that that neighborhood was very concerned about. So we wanted to make sure we protected them with open space across the whole bottom of that site. Parks was very happy with this solution. They approved it unanimously, and I think they had pretty good comments about it. The green space is about 15% green space, and the parkland is about seven and a half acres of parkland. Then, if we look, there was a change on this. When we went to Parks and kind of discussed it with Parks and staff, we were showing a little bit less parkland. We were showing another building on the south end there, and we did have the housing right against that south lot. It was after discussions with staff and neighbors and so forth that we decided to make sure we honored that green strip that I told you about in the 2025 plan, that we honored that all the way around. Because in early stages, we had the housing going right down to the boundary on that southern edge. We took that out and put the green space back in and put in the larger park area that is around the pond. and put in the larger park area that is around the pond. So we've increased that area. This is in context. You'll see, and again, Richard has much better imagery than this. But you can see, basically, this is the Marlot addition to the west. And that addition was done many, many years ago, a great little neighborhood that has large lots, but done way back in really the 1970s and 80s. And then to the south is another addition of large lots. And then the school, CCS, right off the southeast side off that bottom right corner. Again, I-35, Indian Hills, which really, that should just say turnpike because that's what's coming. In fact, I was in meetings not long ago where they think the turnpike will be open and running by 2027, they think, the first phase of it. So you're going to see significant activity across Indian Hills very soon. But in context, again, you can see it layers back from I-35 and from the turnpike zone through the high intensity of commercial into the large multifamily, which gets us significant housing and then down to the single-family and then over to the naturally larger lots that are already there. So if you think about what we do in planning, we layer. We layer from lower intensity to higher intensity. And this has done that all across that site. I always show this slide. Gunnar and I show this slide all the time. You're probably tired of us showing this slide, but why not? Let's show it one more time. It is the housing issue. And Richard is the chairman of the Housing Committee of AIM. It's a real problem. It's a problem that we're facing everywhere across America, really. Norman is no different. In fact, Norman is significantly in the middle of it. You see the demand. This is the AIM committee's numbers. These are not our numbers, but the total demand is by 2045, we're going to need about 23,225 additional housing units to accommodate just the natural growth of our community. In fact, I believe AIM adopted a growth rate that is just slightly less than what we actually have grown at. Probably will grow a little faster than that. But that's anybody's guess. Nonetheless, take those numbers and take it over those years. And we're going to have to average about 1,100 new units a year, every single year, to match the current growth rate of our community when you consider 2.4 persons per household, which is what we average in the census. What you see, this graphic at the bottom is our actual building permits for housing. And that is all housing, multifamily and single-family. Multifamily is the dark graph. Single-family is the light bars. Combined, we've only, I think, in three years, since 2000, since the year 2000, which is the far left, only three years have we surpassed 1,100 homes a year. We usually are way below that. So we need a lot of housing. So the more housing we can produce and plan for and zone for, the better. So now, I'm going to bring up the fun part of this presentation. You're going to see Richard's designs and work over the next mini-slides here and talk about the building setback, talk about his vision for the housing, his vision for the overall area. And it's really pretty remarkable. So Richard, if you will, please.
Richard McCown, 4409 Cannon Drive. I could not possibly live up to Sean's introduction of it. I appreciate it. And many of you know me, and you know me that I'm a little long-winded. So I'm going to try and keep it brief. I'm not 100% sure. I'm a little like Tom McHale.
Yep.
Running this thing.
You are like Tom McHale, yeah. Right there.
Right there? Okay.
Just those are.
All right, let me go back to these pictures because they mean a lot to me. These are photographs taken 20 miles up the road in Oklahoma City at the Wheeler District. I worked on the Wheeler District as a consultant for 18 months. Love this community. Go up there to the night market, and my wife says, "Why can't we just move up here?" I really, really like them because we live in Norman. And, you know, you're a planning commissioner. Anyway, I love Wheeler. It really, really is a special place. And I remember when we were working on it, you know, I'm bringing with me kind of two things I understand, urban infill, and talk a little bit about that, about these affectionately known as Texas Donut Buildings or, you know, a wrap-type building. We built one in downtown Oklahoma City. Built another building that's a podium underneath where you park underneath it right across the street. And then I build a lot of single-family detached houses in the neighborhood, in suburban neighborhoods. I mostly just work on the conceptual design of the neighborhoods. But we've been working on this front yard setback issue for a really long time. And the reason we work on it is because we live in a single-story market. Most of the southern United States build single-story houses. It's the dominant form. Oklahoma City, maybe 18 years ago, hired a consultant from Denver who came to our city and said, "Hey." Because the question was, "How do we reduce the visual impact of the garage door? How do we take and make housing less about this two-car garage that sort of sticks out in front of the front porch, the front entryway? It's a dominant architectural feature." So the consultant from Denver said, "Well, this is simple. You just build the houses like we do in Denver. You put all the bedrooms on the second story. You shove the garage up underneath. Put the primary bedroom out over the garage. You can even cantilever." That's their most affordable house to build. Their basement market, all of the northern United States builds basements. I was building in Kansas City just a few years before I learned all this. But you build the smallest basement you can when you're in the north, and you build the two-story home. The complete opposite is true here in Oklahoma and Texas. The single-story house is the house of choice. You're not running up and downstairs. But it, and open-floor-plan living pushes the garage forward. So I've really been obsessed with this for a long time. And I'm starting here with Wheeler. It's an incredible urbanist community. And these pictures on the slide show a two-foot front yard setback for the living portion of the home, the front porch for, you know, can be the actual condition space. And it's really kind of amazing. Now, when we're working in the heart of downtown, it's a zero setback. In fact, it's an obligatory build-to-line, very much like what we have in city center here in downtown. Some places, we have a three-foot build-to-line. Some places, we have a five-foot. And some places, depending on the use, it's built right on the property line. So anyhow, these photographs, particularly the one on the upper left, these are houses at the edge so they don't have an alley condition. And that's the driveway. And these homeowners are driving past their two-foot front setback. So really, it's two setbacks. It's a 20-foot setback for the garage. And then we were requesting a two-foot setback for the front porch to just match Wheeler. And we doubled it. You know, we're like, "Okay, we'll just, we'll go twice." So we went to four feet. I actually would really like, and as we get into the next pictures, on the parts where we have the garage in the back that is coming off the alley because we do have two streets of that, I would like to actually bring that back to two feet because we're really trying to create this urban, walkable condition. I don't know if any of you have had the chance to read any of the work or hear Jeff Speck speak about walkability. He's written multiple books on the subject, Walkable City, Walkable City Rules. Through all my work with the Urban Land Institute, I've got to have dinner with that guy a couple of times and heard him speak numerous times. The pedestrian is very delicate and very fragile. And they, with the slightest change in the built environment, they just won't walk. They just get in their car and drive. And so that's why this setback is really important. We're, like many mammals, you know, if we turn a mouse loose in this big, open room, the mouse is going to go run up against the wall and run along the edge. We're that same way. It's a concept called refuge and prospect. And so we walk along the edge of buildings. And that's why that really short setback is important. That's why street trees and the tree lawn are really important. When you look at our suburban zoning codes, engineering design criteria, we've taken all of that stuff out because the priority is always on the automobile and is to be able to drive as fast as you can with as few of the obstructions as possible. And drivers drive faster when that's the case. They get in the car, no obstructions, and so they go. In 2022, I, one of my colleagues that helped design this neighborhood, I should probably change the slide. We got to spend, I got to spend 17 days with Dr. Kaufman in Sweden, Denmark, and the Netherlands just studying the built environment. And we're in the home of guys like Jan Gell. And we're moving around the space that they have created. It's the most walkable, bikeable. The city of Copenhagen and the city of Amsterdam, over 30% of the people who live there commute on a bicycle every day. And that's all by design, by changing the built environment, changing the physical infrastructure to put the priority somewhere other than on automobiles, put the priority on pedestrians first, then bicycles, and the private automobile comes way, way last. All that said, we've just held on to this one thing that we really want because we want to create a neighborhood that's as walkable and bikeable, as pedestrian-friendly as Wheeler is. And anyway, so let me tell you a little bit more about it. Like Sean said, over on the east and north toward I-35, that's the retail component. We've been called on this site by so many retailers. In fact, this is where Costco wanted to be. And the main reason that they didn't get here is because 36th Avenue hadn't been widened yet. And it was in the works for Indian Hills Road Interchange to get rebuilt. And Costco knew that if you have these massive construction projects happening, no one can get to their store. This isn't going to work out. They had that very scenario happen to them in Wichita, Kansas, the construction process that lasted four years. And it never, that stores never performed bright ever since. We've been called on this site by a big Swedish retailer. And we're really excited to have an approved plan to talk to those guys about, actually to reach back out to them and go, "Look, what we're going to do." Their locations in Texas are very close to communities like this. This is certainly influenced and inspired by places like the Mueller District in Austin, the Domain also in Austin, Legacy, Legacy West in the North Texas area, or Addison Circle, also in North Dallas. There are developments like this around the Kansas City River District and the north part of Kansas City, around the River Market, and then on down along the waterfront. And certainly, the Trinity River redevelopment in Fort Worth. And this takes inspiration from the Pearl District in San Antonio. Again, you know, this whole group of us get on a bus and travel to these related cities and study. How does this work? What is going on? What are the patterns in our cities that are in this region, between the Mississippi River and the Rocky Mountains, where our rents, our costs of construction, our available labor is relatively similar? I go to New York City to Urban Land Institute conferences, and I look at giant buildings built on platforms over, you know, railway stations. That's, I don't, we can't build that here. Our numbers don't work. We don't, we don't even need to build that here. But we can do this. This is pretty exciting. Some of the other inspirations for this, particularly that central courtyard, that football-field-sized green space, having all of those buildings wrapping around it, giving it protection. That's very inspired by one of my favorite places in Paris. I, when I was young, I got to live in France for four years. That's a long story. We can talk about some other time. But one of the most fun places to go is a place called the Place de Vosges. And it's this kind of courtyard surrounded by apartments. It was built in 1605. It was a courtyard for the royal court and, or the apartments for the royal court, sort of precursor to the Louvre and then later Versailles. It's not on a tourist map. Most Americans never find the Place de Vosges. But it's really a popular place. Surrounding it, looking onto that green space, the ground floor are lined with retail shops and restaurants. And that makes it one of the favorite places for people to go, sit down, have a meal, turn the kids loose. They run across the street, they play in the park. And you have that visual line of sight to know that you're, you know, keep an eye on your kids. Nobody, they're safe in an urban environment, and they go and play. In this particular case, we wanted to make sure that it was also blocked from the wind because, you know, it's windy here more than it is in Paris. Another aspect of this community, I guess I could keep changing slides, is the notion around the mixture of uses. And a mixture of uses is always difficult when you start stacking them vertically. It can, it can be, you're dealing with fire codes. You're trying to get exhaust from a restaurant up a pipe through, you know, five stories of building and out through the roof and try and keep grease from getting all over the roof. I've dealt with all of those things. And we've gained some pretty good experience on how to make all of this work. We've also seen these kinds of retail situations not work. We've seen these buildings built in isolated conditions where they're not in a complex retail environment. And the retail just sits there empty. You know, there's examples in Oklahoma City near St. Anthony's Hospital where the building is a decade old and the retail's never been built out. So here, we've got retail buildings across the street that could have additional apartments on the top of them or offices. But then you've got that face-to-face, ground-floor retail, and then the apartments above. We won't wrap the ground floor of all of these apartments with retail. Where it's facing housing will have the ground-floor apartments be apartments. And in this condition, where you've got houses across the street from the apartment buildings, it'll feel a lot like a brownstone where you literally just, you know, walk right out onto the sidewalk. Your apartment has both a back door and a front door off of the interior hallway. One of the things that we talked about in pre-development, these are high-end apartments. We don't have very many of these wrap-type buildings here in Norman. We've got certainly one at University North Park. That's the Terra. That, that's, those are some of the highest rents in Norman. So these are luxury apartments. And then, of course, the housing, the single-family portion. I guess I should have shown you this slide to talk about the park and the inspiration of Place de Vosges and the adjacency to water.[1590.44] this slide to talk about the park and inspiration of Place de Vosges and the adjacency to water. People like to walk around water. The parkland that Sean was explaining earlier is just the dry space. The lake itself is an additional six acres. So it's going to feel like a thirteen-and-a-half-acre park and that you can fish in. We're pretty good at building ponds that create habitat. And then you've got an additional four acres that are these private green spaces. You can see them here. We've got, you know, some trees in those. These are green alleyways. And this is really important to us, and this is one reason this doesn't really completely match Wheeler. Wheeler's got alleyways everywhere. And it was important to the development team for that community to not have any garages facing the street, except on the perimeter. And so they wanted alleys everywhere. Well, green infrastructure. I mean, I, you guys know me, I mean, I wear green shirts. I try, I mean, green space develop, you know, all of our neighborhoods are green belt first, you know, how do we deal with the water? What are we doing in our green infrastructure? How are we treating stormwater? But we've come across something, an idea that we think is even more potent, and that is to take, you know, these three small common areas, and rather than try and count those as the required parkland, those are just bonus open space that is actually controlled by each one of those sub-associations. So it would be an overall property owners' association, and there'll be a homeowners' association. And then each one of those groups of houses that back up to those green spaces will each be their own sub-association, and they get to do whatever they want in there. So if one of those groups is really interested in cooking, and they want to build a pizza oven one end and a fermentation cellar at the other end, not only will they be able to do that, if that's what they all agree to, but we'll set it up in the dues that they have a funding mechanism to go ahead and pay for that out of their, you know, save up their dues or, you know, finance against it, or however they want to go about it. But we're trying to drive this into an idea of building shared interest. Because people get isolated, and suburban isolation is something that I didn't really understand until I started working in downtown. I discovered that once I was office-ing across the street from one of these big Texas Donut style buildings, that I got to know everyone. I mean, I literally know dozens of people who live down there. It's like being on Sesame Street. I'm a Muppet. I literally turned me into a Muppet. My children would agree. So here we are with a couple of photos or a couple of renderings of the, trying to illustrate this site distance issue. So here, the front portion, the porch, the living space, conditioned space is pulled up to within four feet of the sidewalk. The garage is 20 feet back. And the concern is, you know, if you're backing out of your car, you wouldn't be able to see someone on the sidewalk. But the car that's parked on the driveway, you can't see around it either. And, you know, if you go out to any of our suburban neighborhoods on a weekend when people are home, there are cars parked on driveways all over the place. And with our 25-foot setback, which I hope we change as we redo our design criteria, you'll find cars double-stacked, sometimes completely obstructing the driveway. If someone's pushing a stroller, they have to go out into the street. I am not in the business of doing things that I think are unsafe or that are, could possibly get anyone hurt. And so, you know, we have a great example of this at Wheeler. The central tenant that Jan Gel, as revolutionary architect in Scandinavia talks about is, if a place feels constrained, it feels unclear, lots of obstructions, you're not sure if you should even be driving there, people slow down. They move more slowly when things are constricted. It's safer. The more unsafe it feels, the safer it actually is. It's when we widen everything out and when we make great accommodation for the automobile, that's when we get in trouble. So with that, I apologize for being longer-winded than I meant to be. Yeah, these are, we're excited about this neighborhood. Hopefully, you know, when it all gets said and done, maybe Liz will want to move here instead of go to Oklahoma City. We can continue to live in Norman. I'd love to answer any questions.
Could you highlight on the plat where the alley-accessed parking is that we had seen?
Can I?
Go for it.
So here, this street will have 45-degree parking on both sides, facing those apartments and these home. And then out of the right here, the houses will take, their garage will go in the back from this and these three blocks and the same for this block.
Thank you. So we have a mixture of different types. We have some that are front-access driveways. We have some rear-access driveways. There's a few varieties within here. And you had brought up the point. I do think a four-foot setback does give a little of that extra two feet of visibility, but in those rear-facing access parking garage situations, I would be in favor of that being two feet, to have an example of two feet as well.
Much appreciated.
So that was a, more of a question, I guess, to kind of clarify in there where those were. Any other questions for the applicant on this one?
I have a question, and please don't answer this. Is it 45-degree reverse angle parking?
I, I, we'll do whatever we need to do.
Any other questions for the applicant? Okay, seeing none, I would move to audience comments. Seeing none, planning commission discussion? Okay.
I really like the innovation, and I really like how much green space is in this. And I don't know that I'm gonna say that I'm going to count on the turnpike coming in within two years, but even without it, that is the right place for mixed use. So I think this is a good use of that land.
I did attend the pre-development meeting, and I spoke with some of the Crystal Springs neighbors and their HOA president. And I noticed that we did not see them here for this item as we had on other items, and I don't believe we had any protests from them here, too, which I think speaks to some of the accommodations. We saw this on the last application as well, but adding that buffer, listening to the neighbors, this is a comment I regularly make, that we want to encourage applicants to be doing that and to find places to meet in the middle, and not without expense, remembering that even a small change has a whole set of engineering costs. And putting that in a short timeframe, even going from pre-development to planning commission, that has a big dollar amount to it. So not missing some of those hidden costs that it takes to actually make those adjustments after those meetings, too, that I appreciate the efforts on those and the cost that that takes to do. I am in favor of the two-foot change if that should go through to city council, so I think that would be a nice way to see examples of both. I also, I appreciated having some examples in Kansas and Texas and other states, and we do have Wheeler District being a clear example. We also have some areas in form-based code that we see some of these smaller setback lines that we've actually started to see things built into. So encouraged to see more of those in different types of housing and some smaller lot sizes, which I know is a goal for many in the city of Norman, and this could have some examples of some of those smaller lot sizes and those different, different types of property on there. I don't know that I can think of another sub-association that exists in Norman or nearby that would act in this way. So another new kind of structure that we could see, hopefully, as an opportunity for neighbors to have a little bit more control in a more localized way. I think that's an interesting concept, too. And anything, I do appreciate working with Commissioner McCowen, so I would love to have an opportunity to keep her in Norman the next 10 and 20 years or as long as we can. So I'm in favor of this project. Yeah. If there's no other commission discussion, I'll move to motion.
So sorry, can I ask, may I ask a question?
Okay, so if we have a motion, and then I'll bring it up.
I'll move to approve as presented.
A second.
And moving to additional discussion on the motion, the question was if we wanted to make a condition based on my comments of seeing the change to two-foot as the setback in line with what the applicant intended, has made their intention for, is also desiring, and that I also verbalized a desire for, if we wanted to add that. Okay, so would then the, I don't know who made the motion.
I'll amend the motion to include the inclusion of a two-foot setback in areas desired by the applicant.
And for clarification, areas desired by the applicant are those that had the rear-access parking, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
Did we do that correct? Okay.
Did we get specific enough?
Is there any other clarification that the planning department might need?
So could I just request that we get on the site, the preliminary plat that you had the four feet, we need to amend that as it moves forward?
Oh, put it on the plat.
Yeah, but it's gonna have to be specific, okay.
We can do that.
If the applicant would like to do that, that would be something that I would be willing to also have. Okay. Okay, all right. Any other discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I would take the vote.
Commissioner McDaniel?
Yes.
Commissioner Byrd?
Yes.
Commissioner McClure?
Yes.
Commissioner Griffith?
Yes.
Commissioner Kendall?
Yes.
And Commissioner Brewer?
Yes.
Passes six to zero.
Okay, moving to our next two items, and hopefully, our commissioner will be rejoining us for much longer now. Item number 12, consideration of approval, acceptance, rejection amendment and/or postponement of Resolution R-2425-93, a resolution of the Council of the City of Norman, Oklahoma, amending the Norman 2025 Land Use and Transportation Plan so as to remove lots 2C Block 1 South Class in addition of the Indian Meridian Cleveland County, Oklahoma, from the commercial designation and place the same in institutional designation, 2919 Classen Boulevard. And item number 13, consideration of approval, acceptance, rejection amendment and/or postponement of ordinance O-2425-28, an ordinance of the Council of the City of Norman, Oklahoma, amending Section 36-201 of the Code of the City of Norman so as to remove the Lot 1 Block 1 Life Church Norman and Lot 2 C Block 1 South Class in addition of the Indian Meridian to Norman Cleveland County, Oklahoma, from the C2 General Commercial District and PUD Planned Unit Development District and place the same in the PUD Planned Unit Development District and providing for the sufficiency thereof, 2919 Classen Boulevard and 1500 East Imhoff Road. And we'll take the staff presentation.
So as heard in the description, this project does include two parcels. So the primary parcel is the existing Life Church Norman parcel, which is in part industrial and institutional in land use. And then we also have the subject tract at 2919 Classen, which is currently designated commercial land use. So specifically for the land use change, we are looking at that 2919 Classen parcel. It is surrounded by commercial, and then also that existing Life Church parcel. For the rezoning, we are looking at both of the parcels. And if the rezoning is approved, the applicant will move forward with a lot line adjustment so that the two lots become one. The intent of the project is to subsume that smaller 2919 lot into the overall existing Life Church lot, demolish the building on-site, and then install a second driveway for the existing Life Church with access to Classen. And that will be a right-in, right-out for safety, which is approved by ODOT. And so you can see kind of the existing tract. The Imhoff Road has a very long access all the way down to Life Church, and so they do want to open up that smaller parcel there on the southwest. This is the existing parcel looking directly at the subject property from Classen, so you can see Life Church behind it. It's currently used for auto shop. Looking, I believe that's west, along Classen, you can see again that auto shop. And then looking east towards Highway 9. This is the existing property from the north side on Imhoff, so you can kind of get an idea of what the signage would look like. They are proposing to install a sign along Classen, and in the case that the lot line adjustment is not approved and the two parcels remain separate, the applicant has put in the PUD that they would be allowed one off-premise sign for Life Church. And the zoning code only allows that in a few specific areas. So that would be not allowed within 600, or unless within 600 feet of the center line of highway, Interstate Highway 35, and placed in either C2 or I2 zoning districts is where it is allowed. It is not allowed in any other area. The applicant intends to meet all of the other standards as described in the staff And then, just really quickly, you can see the proposed in-and-out along Classen here as well as the open space plan. So there are no proposals, proposed changes to the existing landscape plan.
Thank you. Any questions by commission for staff? Seeing none, did we have an applicant presentation?
Do they have anything else planned?
Oh, we're going to hear from the applicant, and I think they'll address that. Thank you.
Colton Wayman with Wallace Design Collective, representing Life Church. That was an amazing presentation, so I don't know that I can provide any further detail. I will say, thank you, Ms. Todd, for being here. She was at the pre-development meeting. Everyone seemed like they were on board with everything. So I will say that they were excited about the potential of reducing traffic off Imhoff Road, which, you know, with church services and everything, it can get crowded. So yeah, I don't know that I have necessarily anything else to add, but I'm happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Since we did hear the question, are there any other plans for development in this or maybe talking about what the scope of what we're voting on today is?
Sure. So in terms of uses, that property that was purchased by Life Church is zoned commercial right now. When it's, if it is joined with the, with this proposed PUD, it would strictly be just church uses that would be allowed, so significantly reducing the amount of uses allowable on that property.
Just to follow that up really quick, there's a lot of open space, and I realize that future development could encroach on that, you know, buildings like rec center or whatever. Are there any plans for that? I realize that's beyond the scope of this, but at this time, I like all the open spaces.
No, there's not. This is just so they can get that driveway in.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for the applicant? Seeing none, I would move to any audience comments if you'd like to come up and make a comment. Or if not, we could move to planning commission discussion.
Hold on, hold on.
Oh, oh, yeah. Would you be able to come to the microphone if that's possible? And then?
Can you get a microphone or?
Yeah.
Bring the microphone.
And, yeah, hang, and just start by stating your name and your address, please. And I do have to cut you off after three minutes if you go over three minutes, so.
It's just, I'm a little sensitive on this particular thing.
Would you just say?
I was born on that property 94 years ago.
Could you say your name and your address, please?
Helen Todd, 1600 East Imhoff Road.
Thank you.
Okay. And I was the one that had the responsibility for my family of selling the property, and I was lucky enough to get this church to buy that. But anyway, PUD is a word I guess I hate to hear. The property was, said that I could not sell it for anything except industrial. And the property was taken from my dad during World War II to put in an auxiliary landing field. And when they surveyed the property, apparently, the county survey says that it's how it is at the time, who was the only ones available, brought the property over, my dad's property, a little too far. He didn't get enough of his land left. But he had tried to buy the land after the war was over, and he was not allowed to. And then instead, the government gave it to Norman, Norman, to the Oklahoma, pardon me, Oklahoma gave it to the university. And at the time, whenever the war was over, anyway, he couldn't buy it back. And so when they gave it to them, we, my husband and I myself, in '67, built our house. And this is 1967. I'm sorry. Anyhow, when I got ready to sell it, I tried to sell it at the time under PUD, and I was not allowed to because Hatachi next door did not want me to sell it to them. They wanted to buy my property. Well, my property with just two and a half acres was not for sale. We wanted to live in our house. And so as a result, when I tried to get it zoned, I could not get the council to rezone it because Hatachi came and said they did not want PUD, they did not want apartments. And so I could not sell it to them. So later on, when the church wanted to buy it, they didn't have to have, have to come to the council. And so I sold it to them and was very glad that they were there. We were, they were told us that they would not have very much traffic, except on Sunday they would come down by us, which was great. And now that's going to be even better, but I just get excited when I hear PUD. And I'm sorry, but that's why I'm here. And so I thought maybe they might already have something planned. We have so much traffic now, we never We have so much traffic now, we never used to have traffic, and now the roads are terrible with the college students all around us. We have three sets of apartments right across the road from us, and now we have some low-priced housing that's going in right down the road from us, and all those are coming down that road. We used to have one wagon with horses, or one low-cost car. We now have hundreds and hundreds of cars that are coming in front of the house. So, I was, just got excited, and I appreciate you getting to, let me say something.
Thank you very much. And we appreciate hearing the history of the property, and it's always good to know the gravity of some of the things that we do across our community, generational gravity is on there. So, thanks for coming and for your comments and sharing the history. Is there any other discussion by planning commission? Seeing none, I would take a motion on this item.
Move to approve.
And any other discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I would take a vote.
Commissioner McClure?
Yes.
Commissioner Griffith?
Yes.
Commissioner Kendall?
Yes.
Commissioner Brewer?
Yes.
Commissioner McDaniel?
Yes.
Commissioner McCowen?
Yes.
And Commissioner Burt?
Yes.
Passes seven to zero.
Moving to miscellaneous discussion, does staff have any information for commission?
Staff does. Okay. Staff would love to. Staff would love. Staff, here comes staff. I do. So, we have some exciting news. Last night, the Ames Steering Committee voted to recommend approval of our seven master plans, land use plans, for you guys to view and vote on, to send your recommendation to council. So, we will have a joint meeting, sorry, April 9th. I don't know the date, the time. It's on a Wednesday. We're hoping for 4:00 PM. It's a joint meeting with city council. It's, we can talk about time, but it'll be a presentation of the plans, and then kind of, not how they'll impact you, but what you'll see coming before you, and things to consider when you get items. We also have some ordinance changes that will be coming alongside our new comp plan, so we'll go over those. And then, you guys will vote on it on April 10th, and then it will go to city council May 13th, I think, and the 27th will be final vote. And then, the ordinance and the new plan will be in effect at the end of June. I'm kind of randling, but, so, exciting things coming, but please mark the 9th on your calendars as well as our regular meeting of the 10th.
And may I ask, when will the draft plan be on the website?
Tomorrow.
Thank you.
Through March 24th. So, you might get a head start, because it's, it's a long one.
Will, will you email us when that goes up on the website, just with the link?
Thank you. Does staff have any other information for commission? Moving for commissioner comments, I do believe our next meeting will be in city council chambers, so.
Did everybody get the email? We are moving, okay, good.
So, we'll call that a joint announcement by commission and staff. We will be in city council chambers is the intended location for next meeting. Is there any other comments by commissioners? All right, seeing none, if there's nothing more to come before commission, I'll declare the meeting adjourned.[1744.61]